Workshop.
Workshop, sorry.
Work session.
Work session.
At session.
Now, I'm not voting anything. Do I motion to open or do I just?
Nope, there's no actions that you can really take during this, so it's pretty much just start the meeting and have discussion.
Uh, would everyone like to rise for the pledge of allegiance first?
Very nice way to start.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, those work sessions to discuss ideas anybody's had or wants to talk about about possibly making a new zone? Or any other things we need to do to kind of punch up the book?
If if I beg you, I think discussion, the main part of this was to discuss in particular gap between our our one zoning district and our own two zoning district where we have a little hole that jumps from single family residential to multifamily. Uh, as you recall, one of the concerns, somebody wanted to go to R two, but if they went to R two, their house and garage could be torn down, so they could build an apartment there then. So the point is was was to see if we could find something in between R one and R two. Uh, more specifically, we talked about targeting accessory dwelling units. Something such as being allowing like an apartment over a garage. Uh, I'll just, if I may, just just a couple of comments. I I personally see two different paths on this. Um, the first path would be on R one to add a special use variance. The downside in my opinion to that is if you already think it's okay, why would we want the B Z A to hear it again and again if everything meets the requirements that would be set? If we had a a second or we created a third residential district, went between one and two, which I would recommend be 1.5. So they stay numerically correct and understandable. That would allow under the right conditions that you would set as as a board would under under those conditions would allow for an accessory dwelling unit on the property, not necessarily requiring a special variance to do that. It would require the property owner to get their property rezoned. Then there may be required, it 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 goes deeper. There may be if they have something already there. Um, you have to define if you have a garage there, you want to turn into apartment and you want to just strictly, let's say, go up. How do you want to do that? What if it's already five feet from the property line? Um, is it still okay to just go up on it without increasing the footprint? Uh, what if they want to increase the footprint? Does that require variance? We'd have to, uh, we'd have to have, like, we'd have to, just like all of our other ordinances, we'd have to have allowable uses and and special uses. If you if you were to do that also. So those are things I'd ask you to consider in your discussions.
Well, right now we've got it for large. If it's a non-conforming structure, it can't be built up without variance. You know, I mean, it's on same, I'm not on your home. But and you're allowed to review on it. You can't go up with that.
You mean a footprint?
And I mean, my suggestion for that, I mean, initially, I think we got to make sure in our ordinance that we have no two residents on any property as far as to primary structure. No dwelling, two different dwellings.
To comment on that, that is in the works in the updated ordinance. However, this ordinance would allow that.
The uh, the other thing.
That would be the whole point of this.
The other thing is the new comprehensive plan throughout it calls for a whole bunch more flexibility with residential to include density than we have we have right now. And my recollection from our last meeting was we had the homeowner on Lake Street who wanted to um, add an accessory dwelling unit above the garage and I don't recall there being a whole lot of opposition to the idea other than we didn't have a vehicle to help him accomplish what he wanted to accomplish.
Right, because your orders wouldn't allow.
Yeah, but I mean, in terms of like, well, this somehow destroyed the character of the neighborhood. Was he got put up a four-story apartment building? No. So we just didn't have a way to allow him as opposed to was it a bad idea?
Right.
Yeah, that that's what I'm saying. So I think with the new comprehensive plan, it would it would be good for us to take a step back and say, well, this is how we've kind of done things, but the new comp plan kind of really calls for us to take a fresh look all there.
But wouldn't that create ambiguity? Um, between what we think for one person, what we think for the other person.
Well.
I know B G A had that way by one way or the other. But frankly, kind of pretty much, I mean, could one kind of put the ordinance in cover that what we get. What we can question.
Well, I what I think is particularly because our one of our because our biggest challenge, I think, town is housing um, is to to look, and I don't know, is Sean Cerise still going to help us with ordinances?
He is.
Is to look at what, you know, how the municipality has done to make it easier to kind of increase housing stock when they're footprint. Um, South Bend uh, has flexibility for accessory dwelling units. I think they've got I think they've got six different variations on R one. Depending on how close in town you are, they're they're looking like more density.
Yeah.
And so, for example, I think Barry, you mentioned. Um, we've got maybe a majority of our lots in town that wouldn't meet our current minimum lot size or setback. On the other hand, you look at properties on Forest Place or Liberty, it's like these are really desirable. But you couldn't, you couldn't duplicate them today.
Right.
Um, but like you look at the South Bend ordinance, they'd say, well, yeah, that's a district in where that light side lot size and setback makes sense. As you get further and further out, they get bigger. Um, I think Minneapolis is also a city that have a huge housing crunch. Uh, started looking at allowing people to do things like the property owner wanted to do on Lake Street, but we didn't have a way to get there. So I I just think we got to take a step or two back and it's just how do we sort of accomplish the goals, the comp plan? And maintain the character of the of the town.
Yeah. Doing this. Uh, I think that there was some uh, concern about spot zoning in this, right? The one you're referring to, Don, I I, you know, and spot zoning uh, can be a problem in this small community too.
Well, and and it was me, it was kind of we because I was entirely sympathetic for what they wanted to do, but it didn't fit R one. It didn't fit a special use. Um, and then the next step is R two and our R two and our current zoning ordinance is a is a whole different species. Right?
Yeah.
I mean,
That explains why.
You could, you could arguably have done the dunes with R two. And we would, we would never want something like that right here.
Right.
You know, close to the lake. So that's what I'm saying is we're, we just got a gap there uh, to Steve's point that we got to think about. How do we fill and looking maybe at other towns and communities that have done that in a way that's promoted growth, but still respected the character of the surrounding neighborhood.
Right. But yeah, and I agree with you. And I know there's cases right now, we're looking at don't like, as we're talking about, you know, your spot zoning, R two, R one. And even if we tried to come up with a R three that accommodate what we're looking at, you would still be going back through almost half the spot zone in order to put the replacement in what we have.
But that would be the intention of it. That would be the intention of this.
Yeah.
Of 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 the news, of of a third residential area.
Is it gonna be affect like we worry about spot zoning now because you got neighborhood of R one, small yard, whatever, but R two in there, which allows a lot bigger.
Matter of fact, it's called it as spot zoning, R three, R seven, you know, what?
Well, no matter where we started, it's going to be a spot.
It's gonna be spot zoning, yeah.
Yeah. But I think that the uh, there's, I think there's probably multiples in between. So if you like, just think about like 415 Lake Shore, because that was R two, so I recall. They got it on a whole lot more with our with that than they did, and
Well, they went to P U D, P U D.
They go to P U D, but they could have done, they could have developed it by R two. But it, but you know, they've done a nice job respecting height. Um, whereas if they had just stayed with R two, they could have, they'd gone up much further than I think anybody would have found desirable.
Good.
So I think there's a graduated approach to depending on where we are in town as to
Right.
what maintains that character and feel.
And the lot size.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want something that towers. Um, but that's why I like bungalows on Liberty and Forests, like, seems about right to me.
Yeah.
And if you put one of those on the market, it's gonna go like that.
Yes.
Uh, we're gonna have comments towards the end, if that's okay. Thank you. Um, the other thing I have a question of is like, so if it stays with the aesthetic of the area that's in and we don't add any more footprints, like putting a apartment above a garage or if somebody chooses to turn their full-fledged basement into a rental unit, it's not changing the footprint, it's uh, just adding a different use of the area that's already there. So they're not tearing down a garage to put up a garage with apartment on it. So if they get this new district, it'll basically, besides the height of the new building that they're going to add on, but if somebody wants to like, I'm trying to figure out how the house by the funeral home came to be a three-unit building. Because it's just a house and then somebody decided to put some drywall up and turn the first floor and one apart, two different apartments, and then the third floor and the third. I don't know which one you're talking about. Uh, the one we rezoned is our home. Because like it's already happened in the past, that we've taken same footprints and divided them up into multiple classes. It hasn't changed the character of the neighborhood there, but it does change the use.
Because if I recall that case correctly, essentially, we just I mean, it had been that way.
It was your grandfather. Yeah.
And so we kind of just, you know, I mean, made it made it legal.
And now this is the opportunity.
It's already going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is an opportunity to
I mean, nobody presents a hotel, you know, we had to go through all that too. Because it wasn't known for what it was being used for.
Kind of the hotel behind you.
Yeah.
Okay. Behind pops. So you mean a motel?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. You said hotel, for some reason I was thinking of the apartment.
Most of the difference.
Uh, motel overnight, the hotel stays longer.
Oh, I always thought it was a motel you can come in from the outside. Hotel has hall.
I didn't know that.
That 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 could do, that's reading.
Yeah.
And and in a community this, why? Why do we want to do this? Why?
Why do we want to be what?
Change the, basically what we're talking about is is spot zoning under a different number.
Before right now, you moved, you've had how many years of only two zones as far as residential? And you've got according to comprehensive plan, you want to make a more denser population, I mean, bringing more people in. Why? Why you want to just freeze, no growth? Because I mean, companies.
Well, start to start with with the academy, you've been the second largest employer in the county and most of those people not living here and spending their money here. Be nicely lived here and spent their money here, having some affordable, more more likely affordable housing or more friendly market-based housing.
I mean, affordable housing, I'm not joking, more. Yeah. But resources, I mean, what you're looking at.
Yes, you know, they're building the dunes and these other places, you know.
True, but I mean, there are people that want to live in the community, not in a delegation. They open, you open up for more variety of what you're going to welcome into the town. But I mean, we need to do it with the same protection as what already is. And so that's why it's complicated to kind of get anything like we're talking about as far as people want to do that, bring more people in, but now without spot.
So I think a good place to start is is like people may have something in their minds, what this might look like. Maybe decide decide what like a lot size should be or maybe minimum square footage, if somebody wants to build on an existing structure, if you've got a a ten by twenty garage, you can barely get a car in, you really want somebody to put an apartment above that. So I'm not saying make one, don't make one. I mean, saying, I think it's a good idea by far, but um, if it happened, what would you want a minimum lot size to be? What would you want a minute, what would you buy, want a minimum dwelling size to be square footage?
I mean, are you talking about just for this?
Strictly for this, if if we, if this board were to want to create a new zoning district, of course, it would have to go through the town council then. What what would it look like?
Right, that's what I'm saying. Are you just talking about the like?
I'm just talking about creating a new zoning district.
I, to me, I think it's a question of density. Because I was just, before I came, I was looking at um, our current R one zoning minimum lot size, 10,890 square feet and calls for lots to be 75 feet wide. Um, using the G I S, so measurement's not precise. Um, I was coming up with lot sizes of about forty-five wide and maybe a hundred feet.
I think I think there's a section in there in R one that says seventy-five hundred square feet with with sewer and water, and that would be without, that would be without one or the other.
I think it's up to like 20,000 if you're not on sewer. Um, so I don't know, that's to me, I think it's a question of of density. I don't think there is a one-size-fits-all. I've come to that.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing is, if you look at any, the only significant additions to housing we have had have been higher density than what R one would traditionally allow. Whether it's um, whether it's autumn, autumn trace, whether it's 415, whether it's the dunes. Otherwise, we're getting, you know, onesies and twosies and tearing down a house, replacing all that.
Right.
But it's not, it's not adding anything to the house. It's not, you're just adding a newer newer house.
And Don, you were on on the board, and we had changed some of the variants, when it changed where that, that payment, whatever, you know, they look so and this 21,780 was actually for R one. And now the 21,780 are part of one for whatever reason.
It is what it is today.
Yeah, it is what it is today, but we've done.
So regardless of where it was, we need to look at where it is today.
10,000.
Yeah. And where you want to go tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. Could I start out minimal model there yet and with sort of I mean, it's for water and sewer, and just anybody want to repeat, not less than.
When you get into the sewer, water really is, if you don't have sewer, you're gonna have to have a mountain system, you're gonna have to have like mountain system.
Yeah, yeah. There's no way out of a tower here, but I would, I would also note having
But if we're also looking at yard.
Uh, I I wouldn't say that happening for a while.
Okay.
Latest word.
Okay.
Latest word.
Okay.
Um, another thing, as I I spoke to Bob Porter about this also a little bit, to get the utilities perspective on this, and he would want additional dwellings to have their own water and sewer lines. He's had bad experiences where they've shared a line and then decided to split the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
According to county, that goes to county.
Yeah.
Sure, that'd be proof.
Um.
This county doesn't have to prove sewer, they only prove septic. It's it's up to the town to do that.
If they don't have sewer water, that's what I'm saying.
So I do think one thing we might want to take a look at is, now Shonda, uh, help us noodle through um, is the South Bend zoning ordinance, which they've actually won awards for. Um, there's a really good summary early on, different types of neighborhoods from and they use the term slightly different than we do, suburban, which are going to be bigger dwellings on bigger lots. Um, but then they get down to things like urban neighborhoods. These are not high rises, but looking at their illustrations and their setbacks and things, this is stuff like Forests. Um, you know, down to, they don't, again, they don't use the term commercial, they use town like term like neighborhood center, which could be next use. You could have a commercial building and it can be sitting next to an apartment building.
Or an apartment building, but commercial.
Yeah, we'll work side by side, which is again, another one of the things out of the comp plan is to, you know, have have greater flexibility than we we can now in terms of in in commercial of residential necessarily on top. Why not? You know, commercial and then an apartment building or condos and then a commercial building, particularly when we've got so many vacant ones.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, it's just looking at this, it made a lot of sense to me and I'm looking at some of these neighborhoods, I'm like, yeah, it looks like places I've never called.
Yeah.
So I think that, I think we got, I think what we need to think about is a zoning ordinance that fits our community as opposed to because our community right now doesn't fit the zoning ordinance.
Hmm, no. And never will under the order that you've got.
Yeah.
And I don't know that you could ever I mean, if you like reduced inside of your lots that were required, you might make some of the lots conformable after that. But you still wouldn't be solving the problem that we're looking at as far as being able to do what they done. I mean, like your resident, if you had residential neighborhood, whatever you call it. I mean, to me, that's looking at future development. I don't, I mean, if you wanted to zone something else that's in town, you want to try and get neighborhood, how many houses do you have? Would you pick an area that would actually fit? But that would
I I think that would be part of, you have to decide what this is, should look like first.
Right, I mean, you already know what it looks like now.
Yeah.
Right, but we don't know what a new zoning ordinance would look like as far as minimum lot size.
Right.
Um, and then to to keep, continue on with that, what's the minimum building size? And if there's an existing structure, can you build onto the existing footprint even though it's non-conforming? So there's a, there's a host of things to consider.
Right, yeah, right, I can't.
Right.
And I think, I think it's all a good idea to do because because of such a housing issue. And and let's, I think the applicant was also considering not this, not as as a rally unit, but as a a place for family to come stay because everything else costs so much for to for family when they come to stay in the area.
Like what you keep right now, in particular.
No, but I think there, I think there's reasons for it.
Yeah, I mean, I
I mean, I just don't think
I couldn't have voted for it either.
Right now, we definitely discuss that.
You don't, you don't have to have a quorum, this is a work session.
Yeah.
That's already in the close to be looked at.
But it's already, that's already passed, that's that's in the public minutes.
Hmm, right.
Um, but just looking at the
Oh, using his
Come back.
We could, we we can absolutely use this as an example. We can absolutely use that as an example.
You uh, were at that now, yes, not to further move forward on it.
Well.
Nobody implied moving further forward on it.
No.
I'm not sure where you're coming from. I don't understand.
I mean, their application that they're going to come back with, I mean, they're going to look at what
I don't know that they're coming back with anything. They haven't applied for anything.
Okay. They haven't, that's good. No table.
Yeah.
No, it was withdrawn.
Uh, what I was gonna say, for example, is that most of the residential uh, zones in South Bend do allow for accessory dwellings. So they would have allowed for exactly what the people wanted to do.
In R one.
Well, they don't call them R one. That's the thing, they kind of moved out of that construct of mainly look at density.
Now, do they offer how much um, footprint that the auxiliary structure with a dwelling on it can be?
Yeah, I think when you get down to the, into the, into the weeds. Um, I'm just looking at kind of the general descriptions, like the very, the first part of our zone ordinance. But like you have, like you have here, so here's the general outline, but they don't go quite into that detail until you
Yeah.
Yeah, go down to page 173 or something.
Yeah. I mean, that's
Yeah, and the other thing, which we talked about too, that not really the housing, um, I think too, because it's South Bend, they also have um, a university or educational.
Right, because we are looking at that.
Yeah, yeah, which would, you know, deal with like the academy and what's called the community.
And I know when Chuck, if him and I both were trying to get it written up some way or another that we could actually introduce to same mission.
Yeah.
There's a draft that's coming along. This is called institutional zoning.
I, I know it's a little bit of a tangent on that institutional zoning. Are you just talking about a mandatory situation or?
Talking about campus situation, or the academy, you know, the academy home and stuff, it's not on
Yeah, that's kind of a question.
Retaining to the school.
Okay.
Attending to schools.
It's it's pertaining to the academy, some of the activities of um, different academy properties not pertaining to any of the houses that they own.
Yeah, because when an institution owns a home, I didn't know if it falls in there.
It was now, it was still, it's still the zoning district that it's in.
It is, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So, good question.
Yeah, it's it's a great area.
Yeah, and and like those, for example, residents, like the houses that the academy has, they they pay taxes on, property taxes on that, whereas there actually the educational buildings, you know, not. So.
Okay. So going forward with the idea of a new zoning area, does anybody we're just giving kind of ideas of footprint, but does anybody know about like, do they want to go with a smaller lot size? Do they want to acquire a large lot size? I know it's kind of getting into the weeds pretty early, any suggestions?
Right. So Robbie, can I say a little more high level for a minute?
Okay.
And just to spring this up also. So in each of each of our ordinances, you'll see that on the bottom of the page that there says other ordinances, other sections or standards that may apply. So there could be more specific detail in our development standard, which is Article Six, that could accompany this also. So for instance, the same ordinances are going to be applicable for fences. The same ordinances could be applicable for for most, most everything that would apply to this uh, as far as extra ordinances, so it wouldn't change, those things are always going to be there. And you can make in the development standards, you can also make something more specific for this. Assuming you want a new ordinance, you can make things more specific direction in there. It's also aimed at a new ordinance in the development standards. So it's not just looking at a particular zoning district, but it's also the development standards come into play as in Article Six as well.
I guess I'm a little uh, glossy-eyed about that. Are you meaning basically like you can set the minimum, so if somebody does want to make a a secondary structure that it's got to have so much of a square foot itself outside of, okay, so like
Absolutely, as part, that's part of, and that can be part right in, right in that. Right, right in the uh, ordinance itself, into 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 a district itself.
You can't build up with shit.
Yeah. It's got to have enough room for them to get up, turn around and sit down.
Unless it's a big shed. Our minimum dwelling size, even in R one, it's not, it's not large, it's nine hundred fifty-one square feet. Six hundred and thirty-five for R two.
For sure, be more closer to, in my opinion, to something you'd want over, over a garage.
Like an ADU.
I mean, what is the purpose, really, all around purpose as part of everything, you've got R one, R two. Allowed, you know, you have multiple dwelling on R two, we don't on R one, it's trying to keep the community of residential, one family. I mean, wasn't that the whole thing to start with, and being restricted with that, that's where you. So R two, you're allowed several other options. That's why it's R two there.
But with R two, everybody's worried what happens when they sell that lot. Yeah, more or less.
So a, a new district could prevent that from happening and keep it more restrictive to the intended use.
Right.
Yeah, and I would, I would phrase it slightly differently, it would be like one family per structure.
You could.
Versus, because R two, you're sharing laws. But then if you think about, you know, main house, accessory dwelling unit, that's like a studio or one bedroom apartment for, you know, young teacher. That, that, that doesn't bother me at all, because it still maintains that spirit of it, of the R one. One family per, per.
Yeah, but right now, I mean, you've got a lot of, basically two apartments. I mean, you have to work it down or call out.
Well, Billy, Billy Code already allows for a certain number of people, they have to have so many bathrooms and such, so it's already limited. You know, it's restricted and what's in, in state and international building codes already anyhow. So I think it'd be hard to define a family. In, in a house, but I think a lot of that's already covered in building code.
Have a number of people. Get into whether they're actually related or married or not.
And, and, and yeah, and, and number, number of people would be interesting, but I guess we'd have to ask. That's for, that's for something for attorney also to help us out with.
There's got to be standards out there, but I think, yeah, I think you, you kind of get my drift here.
So is it a matter of actually, when we create, if we decide to create another zoning district, would it be to just make an R three and put?
I would recommend calling it R one point five. So it falls in between one and two.
And, and really it makes limitations on what can have the property itself, so versus R two if it's sold, they could do a lot more. Than they could in an R one area or an R one point five, it really would change the face of the area. But R two could very much. Well, and then a one point five would just limit it, limit it from being able to go all the way to.
Yeah, and, and that's kind of what we're looking at, is trying to be able to. Because that's the other thing, it's like if it's already an existing structure in both, and they're just building up or reconfiguring how the interior is. It's aesthetically going to look the same as the rest of the neighborhood.
And you're still coming back to lot size, you're still going to be restricted regardless, whether it's R one, R two as far as. Lot size, what you do then go up.
Yeah, and the question like, you know, where you're saying a garage, it's already, has a variance because it's so close to the road or alley or whatever. Whether you're going to allow that kind of stuff, it could be other kind of old white chips.
accessory structure. If you're going to change.
Except now this is, is, is accessory structure with a dwelling unit on top, it changes it.
Change exactly what the description of the accessory structure.
So you could, so you would, so, well, it would be an accessory dwelling unit, which you could. You could then say if it's an accessory dwelling unit, instead of a sixteen foot height for a garage. You can say it can be up to whatever, and to allow for the second story. Well, you can, you can, you can also say that if they're staying on the same, which to me seems reasonable, if they're staying on the same footprint and going up. And it meets all the standards. Why not?
Yeah, I mean, so you.
I, I, I think when you've got an opportunity to move this back, it's already right next to the road, we've got an opportunity with order to.
Then you defeat the low cost part of this.
Yeah, then they're rebuilding.
And are we going to low cost?
Well, that's what affordable housing is.
Affordable housing, you've already got one house, but not dwelling on that lot. Are you trying to make an affordable housing on the same lot as you've got?
Well, in this case, yes.
Yes, I would say so.
That's a good thing.
And it was on the same book.
When you tell them it's affordable housing because it's family or.
I'm going to call it a more friendly market based housing. And we don't know if the, the intent could be whatever, we could assume that it could, would be a full time rental, but. I believe there's people out there that may want to use it part time here and there.
Is affordable housing actually what you get? You know, based on your income or whatever, is that where actually affordable housing is?
So, let's. A, a reasonable market based housing. So, so there, there, there is, there isn't, there isn't anything established. Yeah, I don't know where you're going to find that.
You can't, because it would constantly change of course.
But, yeah. If you want something to keep changing.
If you want, if you want a definition of affordable housing, you could say it qualifies for government assistance or for section eight housing. And that wouldn't be the intent of this. And I'm not, I don't, I don't even know anything about those rules, except that would not be the intent of this.
I know it wouldn't be the intent, I just, I, I don't have, I want anything to be raised. Where anything, anybody can do anything they want to, other than what you want to predict.
That's, that's why you write to, that's why if you decide to have an ordinance. You, with, within state statutes, you make it the ordinance as you choose.
If you want, want to leave, well, that's guesswork, I don't know what it would be.
Yes.
That, that's my point.
Yes. That would be nice.
I think the, uh, the other thing, and several you kind of brought up too, is to take out that fear of, well, what if? Then what will the next owner do? And where if the next owner is like, well, I got a main house, I got a garage with an accessory dwelling unit above it, that's all you're going to do. To kind of takes that concern away. As opposed to R two. Which opens up a whole bunch of possibilities.
With this R one point five, whatever, you'd have that restriction right there, you'd have changed zoning before they could ever do what. The next guy that bought it could do. He'd come back, try and get rezoned, to do what he wants to do, but. And I like the idea of R one point five.
Yes, yeah, there, there's also, um. You know, there's, there's also this, I'm not saying it's bad or good, but. You know, if your garage is attached, it's not even an accessory dwelling.
Right. Exactly.
It's by fact, fact that there's, there's no connection to it, that's what makes it an accessory. Before you get to dwelling, you need to park. So.
If you put room up, bathrooms, beds, now the kitchen, whatever, your garage. It's actually legal according to R one.
If it's attached. If it's attached.
Does anybody mind if we ask the gentleman, shake this up? Yeah, it's a public comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
First, is there's a difference between detached accessory dwelling.
Can you identify yourself?
My name's Tuvia Poliskin, I'm an architect at Plymouth. I've been involved with multiple, uh. Accessible dwelling unit, designs, construction within multiple municipalities. With their different ordinances and different criteria per these situations we're talking about, and they vary by the municipality, right, the jurisdiction. So there first and foremost is, an accessory dwelling unit is either detached or it can be attached. Meaning it can be attached horizontally, it can be attached horizontally or vertical, but it means it's attached. Physically as a structure of, of building construction. Detached is separated. Okay, that's the only difference of the language, is still, still accessory dwelling units.
Right.
Okay? Which is important, because people have an existing house, they want to make one floor one, one the other, right, or a section. A building code says you have to do certain things for that to occur, besides planning. So that's the first one I wanted sort of bring forward. The other is, it doesn't necessarily have to have a different zone, because that's a difficult one, say go R one, R two. R one point five, now you're rezoning a whole map. Very difficult to do that. So under my experience, in other municipalities, it is within the R one zone. As a permitted use. With ordinances and criteria to define how big, how small. Set, uh, height, bulk, parking, lot coverage, all the standard planning requirements. So if you have a lot that say, I've been in this example, where I had a design one at four hundred and fifty square feet. That's the minimum, by the way, in most jurisdictions. Couldn't make it bigger, because the lot size and the percentage of what that was allowed to be turned out to be what? Four hundred and fifty square feet. So I couldn't go one inch greater than that. It's limited, even though you, you, you could, right, with planning. Uh, and that was in a historical district as well, so it had to get approval by the historical district for aesthetics. And then also in terms of the general planning criteria for accessory dwelling units. So depending upon the lot size, you create formulas and percentages that determine. Oh, if you've got a lot that's only five, uh, five thousand square feet, you're still allowed to have a unit on it. However, can it meet this criteria? That's fair, right? If you have a lot that is twelve hundred, uh, uh, twelve thousand square feet, you could hit, hit what we call the maximum. All right, now the maximum size tends to vary, again, by location a lot of times. To max one thousand square feet I've been involved in, and max twelve hundred square feet I've been involved. And everything in between, seven hundred square foot, you know, right, because of this. What I want to call a percentage and proportion based upon context. Physical mass, right, in your neighborhood. So that's a way that I have had the experience of, to work from of those guidelines, of how that gets formed. As possibility, but it doesn't have to change zone. It's actually the R one single family zone that allows for the accessory dwelling units within that zone based upon this criteria.
Sounds, it would make the existing, like if it was in R one, it would make it a lot more complex. We just added a whole bunch of different sections just by what you said, as far as accessory dwelling unit sizes. Attached, detached. To, to me, it'd be adding, it'd be adding a lot to a, a pretty simple zoning ordinance now. This is my thought, right?
But if you create another one, that you have, where you could have in the R one point five, a single family dwelling unit. And you could have this. Right?
And that's where I'm at. Well, one point five gives the planning commission the option to approve or not approve, get it rezoned. Depending on, could also be depending on feedback from the neighborhood and looking at e- each, at each case on that. So it would give the planning commission the ability to say yes or no to rezoning, depending on circumstances. And I guarantee you in Culver, there are circumstances that come up.
Uh, with the information you've given us, we're going to discuss real quick, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate what you're saying, but I think it'd be more complex.
Yes, I, I love your, your point on what definition of accessory dwelling is, it's well taken. I was just looking, know, our ordinance way is drafted, I'm not saying it's, it's, it's right, because to me it's a distinction without there being a real difference. We do make a distinction, which we say in attached garage is considered to be part of a principal building. Freestanding garage is, is an accessory structure. So should that be the case, I'm not sure it should, because they're both, they're both what they are, right? But they're. You can, you can go, either we get into L one, which is another issue, but you go around the lake, it's like. But for the fact there's a breezeway or rough, you're looking at two, three or more separate structures.
Oh, that's the other thing.
And I don't know, is that bad or good, not. Not saying it's either, but it's different.
And this is a blanket development standards for most all of the zones, and so some of our lakes do have garages across the road from. The primary one, so that's where, where we start.
Yeah, we can hold a long game.
Yeah, I, I'd recommend that going down the lake right now.
Still accessory.
Uh, that's where I look at South Bend, which has, there, that, you probably understand better than I, the way that South Bend operates. But it looks to me that they're focused on density as they start talking about their different districts as opposed to necessarily. What you can do with it, but density then will drive things like height and, and setback. But I think pretty much every residential I've, I've looked at there, they, they allow for, uh, necessary law.
Because it also gets into like, if you start breaking down Culver in a different area, some areas are a lot defined, so.
What more information would you all like to see or hear? To start with, uh, Tuvio, Mr. Polinsky?
Poliskin.
Poliskin? Has been kind enough to send me a great deal of information that I haven't had an opportunity to go through yet. It'd be, it'd be nice to look through that, uh, thank you again, very much appreciated. Chloe's had more experience with these than we have.
Yeah, the square footage or the size by the square footage of the lot makes a lot of sense and it'll help control. If you have a bigger lot, you're going to want the park, but. So with a smaller lot, you don't want to put. I don't know, they're only going to have so much parking. Some lots are just going to be too small to have a reasonable.
You take your house, you have your garage, you put a house on it, partly where you can call it, where people want to park.
Especially only one side of the street. If you want to use the street.
So I think that would help make a case for additional zoning district that, that could be looked at before approval. Or it could be built into an ordinance, I mean, required parking on site. But then still you have to take into consideration our impervious coverage requirements.
So I think that's very applicable. I, yeah, I agree, I think the pervious and pervious would help us a lot to focus more on that.
And the other thing that came up, and I don't know if I was thinking it this way, if we're talking auxiliary. Structure with a residence above, it's just comes residence when it has a kitchenette, a bathroom. And, uh, sleeping quarters.
You can have all above.
So go to the back of your book and look up the definition for dwelling. There should be, there, there might be a definition at the back of your book for dwelling.
Because that's what, i- if it's, people want to do this where they're trying to find, not necessarily long term housing, but. If they're having relatives over and they don't want to make them go down from the garage apartment to the main house in order to use their bathroom in the middle of the night. It is an auxiliary structure with housing on top, but anybody's not going to pay.
So, so, and then where, where you draw the line when you do that between. letting somebody camp out in their yard barn. Then you go in the house to use the bathroom. We don't, we don't allow, we don't allow that to be a resident.
Yeah, but. I don't know, is there electricity in this area?
I think you're going to have to have some, some, so, you're going to have to have a kitchen and bathroom. You have to have living space for, for something to be a dwelling, did you find a definition for it? Maybe something we need to clear up also.
All right, which one do you want? We've got dwelling unit, apartment, apartment efficiency, manufactured home type ABC.
A building designed and used exclusively as a dwelling unit. As well. That's.
Yeah, well, now there's another definition for dwelling unit, which gives a department as per efficiency permits. Especially use.
So our our definite, our definitions are something that'll get looked at also. In the beginning of our book, it says that we reference the American Planning Association's definitions. I'm not a member of that, so I I probably need to join so I can have access to that.
Or in school, don't define a word by using the term.
I mean, that's how I got to most of my Booker boards. To kill a mockingbird is about.
I mean, we know what it is, right? You can sleep there, you can eat there, you can shower there.
A restroom and then one kitchen.
Because I guess it's cutting into the weeds of. If somebody's making this for family to come stay over, a kid that's outgrown, living in the house, but they haven't quite left the nest, if that makes sense. You know, it's an in-law suite situation where there's not really money exchanging hands, but the person does want a sense of independence. And so when it becomes an actual rental unit, then it changes the definition of what that auxiliary dwelling structure is.
So I would think you'd want to design this right off bat with assuming that somebody's going to rent the places out.
Because that's, you're not gonna have any control.
Just make that assumption right from the beginning.
Yes, just then I.
Cause sooner or later it will.
Yeah, that one is, so then I can think about a case that we've heard. And the request was. I want to, basically, I want to erect a wall. Between this part and this part, and I'm really creating two dwelling units. It used to be there's, yes, this, there's two kitchens, there's multiple bathrooms, there is a door in between. But we want to put up a wall. And, you know, we said, okay, but we had to, I think we had to go to R two. We just, yeah, we just didn't have flexibility to do it. And it didn't, it didn't change anything about who was living there or parking or anything else.
Yeah, it just was.
It just created a more private. Arrangement for the two families.
And exactly, it just changes a, a small change that makes an entire. Zoning change.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, but we would not, but again, that's one of those. We wouldn't want to see all the possibilities that could be hard to go in, go in to that block.
Exactly.
So. It's too hard right now, that is my point.
And that's kind of having it as one point five almost makes a better way to do it because it is. A residence first.
Yeah.
And then they're going to just transition a little bit, but they're not going to get all the flexibility of an R two for that lot. With whoever buys property.
And I, and I take your point about.
How you invite this out, where, where do you? Doctor administration, where do you stop available?
Well, I think the, and the two things I want to say, I did, when I'm thinking about one point five, it's a. It's to accomplish something, whether it's a separate type of zoning. Or it's amending what we have. And Barry, you're right, we could, we could change punctuation.
Yeah.
And here, we would have people for a public here who would say no. But that's not with the comprehensive plan calls or a comprehensive plan adopted by the town council. I think the comprehensive plan was adopted by, by unanimously. By the town council, so that in some ways, those are our marching orders.
Anybody have any more thoughts I want to get out for research or anything that one Steve looked into? Okay. Kevin.
I'm struggling with you guys wanting to make this into a separate district and part of the issue is. Your resistance to spot zone in districts. I think the idea from the discussion in the comp plan was to open this up for areas. With bigger lots that it has a bigger lot. So to try and give you ideas like the, the, the property that was brought in fast time. That's a bigger lot in a smaller zoning district, so it could work there. The lot at the north end of that street is the same thing, it's a bigger lot amongst smaller ones, so it could apply. So making it a subcategory instead of a district makes a lot of sense. I understand what Steve was saying about, it sounds complicated, but in reality. If you come down to just numbers and you're saying what size the lot is, what you're able to do within this, and it becomes a matrix. That can be figured out fairly easily, does it fit or it doesn't? And then it gets away from turning this into you guys into the BZA that everybody's going to come in for every one of these lots. And ask this change, but you've already decided you kind of want to do this. So shouldn't you make it easier for the building inspector to make this decision and not have public hearings? On every single one of these, if this is the goal. And some of them by your matrix are going to be, so you can't do it. It just, it doesn't fit. So, yeah, it's allowed in the district, but it's not on this lot because the lot's not big enough, the house is too big. Second, the business with the, the separate water and sewer and everything. You had one just not too long ago where they'd already built it out on the south side of town and it is connected. And if you do multi-family, you can bind the sewers all the time, that's not that big a deal. So it's, it's not, the, this is not going to be a situation. That Bob's worried about where you're going to subdivide it. A lot's not big enough to subdivide, that's why you're doing it this way and doing accessory structure, even the one we looked at last time. It used to be two lots, you can't go back to those two lots now because they're not big enough anymore, and there's restrictions. So, so you, you're worrying about a problem that I don't think is necessarily there.
I, I, I'd disagree if we had a one point five. If we had that ordinance, does, that would prevent it from having to go to the BZA all the time. These cases wouldn't have to because it would be spelled out in.
If it's straight, that's going to have to change.
It is, so it'd be the plan commission would, would, would change the district and then.
But you're talking about changing the whole district and changing that, and you're going to get a bunch of fighting on that.
What do you mean by whole district?
If you decide that this is what you want to have. Just for, for, just say it's the area north of, of the lake that you want to do where you can have accessory dwellings. You're going to rezone all that to the one point five from the one. And you're going to have people that are going to fight that, you're going to have a big deal with that. Where what we really want to be able to do is within the existing R one, pick the lots that work. And let it happen. Rather than fighting it, and it's still, it's still in the R one, so if they did try and do more, more units. If they tried to subdivide it or anything else, it's still going to come to you guys with those things, you can say no. So it's, it's not, it's not that kind of issue. And you've got, I, I'm, I'm thinking where, where Barry's concern was where the, where the existing garage is five feet from the property line. That existing garage has been there forever. It's not going to be building toast, but it's growing above it, it's not going to be, it's not going to have the right footings, it's not going to have insulated footings, it's not going to have any of the things that you would have to do if you were building it from scratch. And we still have to follow the building codes, even though you guys say it's okay, it doesn't meet the building codes, it isn't going to happen. So that's, that's going to fix some of those longer term existing things to keep it from happening. I, I think the goal of comp plan was to, to vary this density through the community. Take advantage of some of the places we have where we can do a little bit more density because the infrastructure is already there, the lot size is sufficient. But it's not, but it's not necessary to change a whole existing district. It's just allowing it in those areas, so you're, you're picking and choosing what it fits. And a matrix of, of sizes would let you do that without changing the whole district. Right now, like this one that came in last time, you were, you're stuck between R one or R two. Well, nobody wants R two and those things. Some of those people would have come and complained if there's an accessory structure too. So you're, you're getting into the same thing with the BGA, but if we want to do that, you were all agreeing that you could do that. But you're going to be a bigger public hearing and everything, and it's going to be that fight every single time on one of those lots. So making it a subsection of R one makes a, a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, or just amend R one.
Yeah.
Uh, I, the one criteria I would add to your, to your matrix idea, which has a lot of appeal, so I would, I think I would add. Uh, ratio of our percentage of pervious and pervious.
Well, and that's going to be one of those standards. The, the, the size of it, the impervious surface of it, does it have parking? All those things fall into that matrix of can it sit in that lot?
And the minimum size.
Yeah, the minimum size, all those things fit in, in that lot.
Does it fit? If that lot doesn't have enough room for that minimum size, meaning all those.
I mean, and the other option, realized, you're looking at the R one point five. I mean, I know what you're talking about too. But keep in mind that even though you're making overage, if it needs amendments, you can always add.
Can always amend.
We, we have that power to at any time. Present amendments by the town council be approved.
It just seems it's, it's going to be harder for you to do as a separate district. Than as the other, plus. If it, if you're all agreeing on the matrix, however you guys work it out, what's allowable. Let Steve make the decision. Why make it come to you guys every time if it's, if it's clearly defined of what can be done with accessories.
I mean, it comes back to what's in, right?
Right, yeah.
I mean, there's, and I mean, that's what we all know, that's what we're going to find out.
And lastly, don't reinvent the wheel. It, Steve's asking you what to do. Find some examples and, and tweak them to what you think fits for Culver. But don't try and write it from scratch because you won't get it right and you'll be amended it forever, but if you can find something you can tweak a little bit to run with. That's, that's so much easier.
And I want to throw a ball in the air here. And nobody can agree, I don't know, but I know I've been looking. I grew up P U D. Now, P U D is not, I mean, we got power. Restrictions and everything in the P U D. But under like plenty of P U D, it's anything. At planned unit development. And it's not restricted to how many houses, how many, whatever. It's a proposed building development.
It's an overlay district.
It's an overlay district.
Ours isn't, ours is a separate district.
And under a P U D, you're not, if you want to put two dwellings on that, under a P U D, you can do that. If it's approved. I mean, right now, I mean, we've got amendments for correction, but these, that's one where I hope. Although we're going to be. Maybe satisfying some, but. But maybe that is an option. I mean, even the plan you, plan unit development is, it's almost like an exper, experimental option to the town. You might want to try this.
Everything can do overlay districts in any district, I don't think it has to be P U D. You can do it overly in any district, it doesn't have to be P U D.
But, but in most communities, the P U D is overlay district. Like a historical district, like a reservation district, you know. But it's, but the difference is it returns back automatically. If you didn't cover it at the P U D, then whatever's underneath it governs. Whereas ours is just completely, you wiped out the other district and you started fresh with P U D, it's a standalone thing.
Right, yeah. Yeah, but we've got it.
So what information, oh, I'll ask the same question, what information would you like from me? What can I gather, what can I put together? I heard South Bend reference, which is great, it's close.
For examples where this, where this works.
Tuvia sent me, sent me some information as well, I have to go through.
You know, like, square footage of a lot. Making the accessory building bigger or smaller. I mean, by the size, and then they're, then they're asking about size, so such a small lot is going to push out the possibility.
So I think Kevin, Kevin brought up a good point about, you know, structures and buildings, able to build, build up from what is on a garage. You know, we, we will have to consider, we still allow same footprint. Something's existing, I was just ideas for down the road.
Yeah. I mean.
Do you start over or do you allow about the same footprint, those are just ideas down for you to consider.
I don't know how you could get into the same footprint if you didn't have to rebuild, you know? Be, well, pushing that. Oh, no, that's, that's what I'm saying, this ideal, but not rebuilding when you're already on the corner. I don't agree with that, I don't agree with that. Oh, no, I'm saying not.
Well, we've, but, but we, but we've done that already.
We've done that, but that, that'll be.
But like you said, most of those structures, you couldn't do it without.
Yes, that's, yes.
And, and.
I mean, I think when structures tend to different use.
Because then what if they try to rebuild in the same. Then come back a year later. To do this, but, and that's.
Then that's on, that's on them, they better have played their original construction properly.
Pretty well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll tell you something else that, that, uh, I'll be, I'll be requesting in the zoning ordinances also for, for in town. Is to, uh, not allow any post frame construction. Just going to throw that out there now, when I, when I. Post frame construction in town, pole, pole barn houses.
Yeah, oh, okay.
So I'm going to. Put that in my request to you all, just giving you a heads up ahead of time.
What's your, what's your position for that? And what, what do you think?
It looks like a barn.
They don't have continuous foundations.
No.
Totally, oh, I see what you're saying, like, like poles sitting on a footer.
Yeah.
Oh.
They're slab.
But you got slab, concrete slab.
They're slab, but they don't have continued. But, but when you put.
Have to have a foundation for your slab. You still got to have it.
When, when you go between, but you, it's not going to be continuous when you go between your, your four by fours or whatever you put in the ground. Most, most, most communities have stopped that type of construction. And I can tell you the outcry from this community has been, they don't like it. So that'll be up to you all, that'll be something I, so I'll have in there. Ultimately, when you guys get the draft form, it'll get dialed into where you like it. And where you want it, and when you're willing to present it to the town council, this isn't going to happen. We may get the first draft by the end of the year, but it's going to take quite a while to process it.
So, one thing I would. I mean, it's asked, not, not to request, that is. You approach this in sort of chunks or phases as opposed to, we've got four chapters we're going to amend. And the priority identified in the comp plan was flexible housing, so I think that is maybe the place to focus. And maybe the easiest not to crack.
We have.
Didn't move on.
Many of our ordinances reference Indiana code that's no longer there. So they're, I, I agree.
Just saying, but those are technical amendments that are easy. I mean, they're, they're difficult to track down, but it's an easy.
A majority of the, a majority of the, and I agree, it needs to be a little bit of time.
Right.
I wouldn't expect you to digest it all at once. But it'd be nice to get something done to start being able to present you chapter. Um, and then when you get to these districts, I'm sure you're going to want to go by district by district to review that, that would be my guess.
We're going to need to do that, I mean, our tradition.
My, my recommendation is so we don't keep having to go to the. Is for you to get a draft that you are all happy with all the way through and do a one time. Have the town council approve the one time revision.
And I guess what I'm suggesting is different approach.
Right, it's, it's really what up to you all want.
A year and a half and making. Comp plan was almost two years.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd say let's tackle, let's tackle this issue about R one. See if we can get something that we can reach consensus on. First, and then.
I have no idea.
I mean, I know. Theresa, he had so much.
I don't, I don't know where he's at on that. He told me he had it done, it should be done by the end of the year. With the revisions he's making, so.
Asking if there's already something that Bart wasn't done, R one, that we're addressing that. And that's been pretty much my, my information each time it came up. Right, nothing to do, maybe we need to amend every time it came up, not necessarily at that time.
So R, R one doesn't have very many.
No.
Multiple typos that have to be, to be changed in that.
Right.
Uh, just tell me what kind of information I can get and what you think it should look like. Uh, or this information for now. Uh, or this information for now. Uh, it's, it's really early. So.
I mean, I think we need to pretty much talk about a lot size. Why do you put this into a draft scene?
I, well, I, I can, but it would probably be easier to give you all the information first and decide what the draft's going to look like. I'd rather, I'd rather not make a draft without your guidance on how you want it to look.
Cause I'm looking at minimum lot size, basically it can be allowed. And minimum size, it can be there or there.
How, how about I put a list of these things together? They're consistent with our one, but take it a step further. Be it an amendment to update R one or make a R one point five. I can put a list of the items of interest that I've been jotting down here for you all. And then I can also at the same time look into other ordinances and other information that's been provided to me. And just at least give you a list of things to look at.
That's what I mean. You're looking at maybe, I mean, under R one for special usually permitted. And not that you'd have to ask for better use, but this would be.
I think.
What I was referring to as a draft is suggestions that were made here and things that you, uh.
I, I will, I, I will put something together. We will have some of that in the minutes and I can do a little research and, and build on that for you. I think it's going to be kind of general.
Study it a little bit.
Yep. I, I'd like to make sure you have plenty of information because ultimately it's your choice.
Cause this might be a little early, but I'm kind of curious mathematics that matrix that we were discussing. Like, I don't know if there's a program that already exists where you plug and chug these base ideas. Nobody's done this before.
Yeah, exactly.
So I'm going to start with what already exists.
Yeah.
Both, both in ours and both in other communities have to build on what we have. And I'll, I'll give you that information. I'll give you. I don't want to, I don't want to give you more than you can digest, but I want to give you enough to at least keep the wheels turning.
Just asking, you have somewhat of a ad hoc subcommittee that's interested in this. Can Steve share, share that stuff with us at the same time? And it's up to the word.
So you can't make it, take action today?
Right.
Yeah.
But for, for your next meeting, you can certainly take action to develop a advisory committee regarding this.
I'm, I'm just asking to see the information before the meeting. So that's discussed. We've seen it too. Anything formal where we're voting or anything, we're just, we're just interested parties that we'd like to see where it's going.
I totally understand. Let me see what we can put on the town website.
That'd be cool too.
That'd be fine, but that don't mean you're going to really be able to unless president or whatever allow you.
Right. Right. That's what I'm saying. I'm not asking to be a voting committee. And the websites find if we, if we know it's on the website, that's cool.
I know there's a path. You can look at, at the dunes right now. There could be something for this too, that we could have another tab. It can be clicked on and any information that you look at is public record. It can be uploaded into that.
Opportunity to, yeah, before we voted on it, whatever you know too, but you know ahead of time.
Right. Well, you, you solicited our comments along the way. We'd be better able to give more comments if we have seen the same thing you told me. And so everything that Steve's going to compile. Make a general amount of very much public information. There you go.
I, I'll, I'll do that. The last thought I'll share with you tonight, it may not last, but I think it is. But the last, the last thought I'll share with you is tonight is, this is going to be a lot to digest. And you may still want to consider an advisory committee that can meet at different times to go through this and discuss it, smaller group.
I mean, yeah.
I don't know what else.
Who would you suggest you probably like for advisory?
You would have to ask your board president.
I mean, it's, it's something that we'd have to bring up in a meeting and see how everybody feels about it. Building commissioner builders around.
Doing it through work sessions and that involve public comment.
That's what I, I, I like this. I like, everybody's got a chance to sort of meet and discuss it. Whoever shows up can, which is appreciated. Thank you for coming out a week ahead of time. Thank you.
I mean, or something like this right here. I know you got buyer's commission and you wind up with a buyer's commission. Whatever you, and then you go like that again.
Works essence is. I think Todd has a great idea.
Plus there's this type of thing every time.
For your payroll?
Uh, did you have any other comments based on other things that have been spoken about?
No, I think the, that, that's in terms of symmetrisy, you try to, you try to get it simplified, create a matrix. The system works by, and it's logical.
Yes.
That's the, and no one could argue the logic of that system. Right. So that's where you take away value. You know, the only other thing I would make sure of conceptually trying to keep clear is don't keep the idea that there's an existing garage. The idea you can build on the garage or you can take the garage up, right? But it is, think of, of a lot blank. There's the house. Now you want to add the second unit. This is what it can occur by the matrix.
And that's what.
Ever take whatever.
What I'm talking about formulation, that's what's happening in my head is I'm imagining like a SimCity type thing. You have the lot size, you have how big your house is. And now you're like, can I build an auxiliary structure?
Right, but we, we need to worry. Not going to be called.
And you gather back to perceive is that building code supersedes. So if I got a, 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 a product, a building on a property line, I can have not have windows. Building code. I could go three feet back and have a certain percentage of windows in it. Building code, five foot, the limit's gone. That's building code, right? So building code will always influence not only the planning, but it's also going to influence and restrict what people can and cannot do. Okay.
I had not known about the window one, but I'm, you might be using a detail from another community.
No, that building code, that's, that's the international language.
You just cleared something up for me. It's a fire.
Yeah, distance. That's why they're set up with those distances. It's not fire.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any comments, uh, or other things they want Steve to look up while they thought of it, popped up?
I like to wait.
Let's get a start.
Yes.
We want to set up an order meeting.
Yeah, we see where we are. Cause our regular meetings a week. And I will not be able to attend them.
Don't need to put that in a minute.
As far as what timing you think you just have or get something up. Whatever you got. To look into. I don't want to put next week on your, on your calendar.
Yeah, next week's really busy. Plan commission and B Z A. So personally, if you ask me, I'd like to have it at the week before your plan commission, just like this one was. I mean, it's really, it's really up to you, but that seems like a good time.
So our regular meeting in November will be the nineteenth. You're suggesting the twelfth. For work session?
Yeah, yes. That's really, it's, it's, it's up to you, but it seems to work this, it worked this time.
I'm sure I'm true.
Is that the twelve?
Oh, so we can't, we can't really decide that though.
We can't.
So, so I.
Okay.
Okay.
So think about it. Check your calendar.
Think, think about it. Alright, I'll give that some thought.
Think about it. You might be wanting to jump down after you get the draft up or whatever you want to call it. Once you get there, then now you're going to jump in and say, alright, about it.
Sure, I'm going to have a little bit more on that one by then.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, if everybody's comfortable with where we're at tonight, I'm going to go ahead and end it. Thank you for participating. Thanks for the audience.
Tuvia, may I contact you if I have some questions?
Yeah. Do you have a card just so I, well.
You sent me all that and I get going through it. I know, I know. I appreciate it, but when I go through it, I may.
You can.
I may need some.
I added. By the way, I go through it, I'm going to be a hundred and seven pages. Substance, because it's a lot.
Thank you.
There's certain ones, there's certain that were broken down much simpler. But the ones to, to me are the guides where they basically did it to two pages or one page here.
Yes.
And that's, then you go to the rest of the work.
Yeah, it'll be good to have that installation.
Yeah, I just, I still have something to, I've been thinking about for a long time. So I just, I just feel for and then like a little.
Next Tuesday. Yeah, your family's important. We're trying to keep it short. We only have the rest of that draft to go for. There's not many, much more to go, kids. So hopefully it doesn't take long. And I can put all the notes from, from the last two meetings together and reefers at that.
Couple of wish we had demo surgery. And driving back and we drove back down Elm Road. And come south on Elm Road instead of three thirty one. And I'm telling you, Steve, so this time the, the ground mounted solar units.
Same thing.
The landscape, it was awful. Just off. I mean, I don't know. I know those people are thinking. You know, there's no land left to do anything. Corn or beans or anything else. So we'll have, we'll be able to have a, a nice draft completed. I don't want to see any.
Yeah.